Good evening, I'm Sue Crane, I'm Town Supervisor. It is July 8th and we'd like to go rise to the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is the only meeting we'll be having this month as an official town board meeting, we will cover the supervisor's report and later in the meeting, any department reports that have come in, department and board and committee reports that have come in. So I'll start as we usually do with the town supervisor's monthly statement. "To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the town law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month." The grand totals were, I'm sorry, and this is as of June 30th, 2014. The grand totals were $4,572,225. Receipts were $423,346. We dispersed $901,920, leaving a balance of $4,093,651. And there are some adjustments, minor though they may be, in the back of this report. In the A fund, we're going to reduce appropriations in the contingent fund and increase the appropriations in that same amount. And you can see the explanation for that, and that amount is $3,022. In the B fund, we increased revenues by $2,411 and we reduced appropriations by $2,839 and we'll increase appropriations by $5,250. In the water fund, the ONMSW fund, we're increasing appropriations and reducing appropriations in the same amount for installation of hydrants and valves, in the amount of $2,000. In SNF fire, we have an inc- other funds, sorry. In other funds, in the community preservation fund, you'll see there's an increase in revenue in the amount of $7,080. And the last page for your consideration is a letter from Tom Murphy from M&amp;T Bank. He has been talking with Debbie. This is not on the agenda, but we can, we can address it if you wish, because we did table it last time, to pass a resolution to adopt an investment policy. And we've all seen that for the last month, and this is in reference to that. We said last meeting that we wanted a little bit more information from M&amp;T Bank, and you'll see that it is here. It tells the conditions under the banking services that they will provide. Deb tells me without charges or fees is a very good thing, considering most banks today will, are unable to do that. And they are able to provide our employees with check cashing privileges even though they may not have a banking account there, and that's unusual, they are doing that for us. And so you can read this at your leisure and decide whether we want to move forward or not by the end of the meeting with the investment policy. I see no reason not to, but we can talk about it. But let's get on with the meeting if we can. Are there any corrections or additions to the supervisor's report? Is there a motion to accept? "The above is the true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on June 30th." Is there a motion?
No move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so a few brief announcements for me and anyone else who may have them, maybe starting on the left with Jim Ross. Do you have any announcements, Jim?
I do not, sir.
Okay.
I don't.
Brenda? Okay. Harry?
I do not.
Okay. And Bill?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I do have my town clerk report.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That's okay, that's all right.
I'm still, I'm still in the last meeting of the month.
That's okay.
Thank you, town clerk.
Town Clerk, monthly report for June of 2014. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $1,266.66. Amount remitted to New York, to New York State Ag and Markets for the spade and neuter program, $45. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $157.50. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $207.84, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $1,677. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a fall and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I thought I'd briefly tell you what's come across my desk that I think is certainly worthy of mention. The first is that the Duchess County Agency Partner Grant Programs have awarded over $700,000 to the Agency Partner Grant Program, which allocates or awards funding for economic and cultural benefit, health and human service prevention, intervention, and environmental sustainability and services, those three categories. And I just thought it was worthy of mention that because people may not realize where some of the county's shared services funding goes, some of these very needy agencies have received a fair amount of money, and I'll just quickly read them. The Children's Media Project, Cornell Cooperative Extension for 4-H youth development, Literary Connections for Adult and Family Literacy Program, the Northeast Community Council in partnership with Schools and Business, the Poughkeepsie Public Library District. And in health and human service prevention and intervention, the Catholic Charities Community Services received case management money to prevent homelessness in the amount of $25,000. Child Abuse and Prevention Center received money, Child Care Council of Duchess and Putnam to train school-aged children and program staff, Family Services, 14 Teen Resource Activity Center Program, Friends of Seniors at Senior Citizens for expansion of its senior transportation program, and we're benefiting by that here in Red Hook, and for Northern Duchess residents. And the Hudson River Housing, Inc. has received funding to continue its financial fitness program. The Hudson River Housing has received money to maintain its housing navigator program to assist homeless adults and families. The Mediation Center of Duchess County for Coalition on Elder Abuse in Duchess County, the Mediation Center of Duchess County to expand a bullying prevention program in Duchess County schools. The Northeast Community Council has received funding for the Farm and Food Education Program, the Summer Food Service Program, and Share the Bounty Fresh Food Pantry. And in environmental sustainability and services, Cornell Cooperative Extension received all three allocations in that category. In the first, to provide a science-based instruction support for commercial horticulture and agricultural operations and agriculture-related enterprises. Cornell received additional monies for an educational composting and organics recycling program geared toward businesses, agricultural operations, and county residents. And thirdly, Cornell again received support for the environment and energy programs, including GIS, education and resources for local governments, and support for local watershed protection groups. So the total, again, was $700,000. And as you know, I go through all those applications and serve on that committee, and it's a task to judge them and try to be fair and try to be generous, and some of the applications were really outstanding, so congratulations to those who were receiving them. We have a note from the Red Hook Rhinebeck Elks Club Lodge Number 2022 that they are planning a Red Hook Community Day on July 26th from 12 noon to 4:00 PM. It will be open to the community. They're planning to have free games for children, food, music, and a lot of fun. They've invited the Red Hook Police and Fire Department and Rescue Squad, Duchess County Sheriff's Office, Red Hook Library, and Community Action to join the outs for this event. So again, it will be from 12 noon till 4 o'clock on July 26th, just in case you want to go have some fun, Harry.
Okay. Can I go on the rides?
You can have your rides, yeah. DEC issued an announcement, I think, is, since we're on Panda and the public sometimes catches what we announce. This is important because it has to do with health, and that's one of our primary jobs here at Town Hall, is health and safety of our residents. And they're advising the community that blue algae blooms can produce toxins that can be harmful to people and animals. And they're asked to avoid direct exposure to any discolored water, surface gums, or accumulated algae on the shorelines. And there are symptoms of gastrointestinal illness, vomiting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they are very concerned about beaches and areas of swimming and so on. So they ask that people please pay attention, stay away from algae blooms, they are dangerous. And there's more on the website, if you'd like to look up Department of Health webpage, you will find it under DEC's Blue Green Algae Bloom. Sounds awful. And you remember that we sent a letter in support of Home Rule for making decisions about the industrial process hydrofracking? And I think most of us have seen that that court case has been decided by the Court of Appeals on June 30th in favor of the plaintiffs. And we got a letter from Elizabeth Thompson, who is supervisor of the Town of Ulysses, which was one of the towns involved, that hydrofracting can be decided and determined whether or not it exists in each local municipality by use of zoning. And that industrial process is ours to cope with and decide about. I think we did that last, Brenda, I know that you wrote a beautiful letter to Cornell regarding the possibility of our serving as a pilot Hudson River Estuary Program model.
That was mostly Michelle's doing, but I helped.
Okay, she did, and I got it in on time, I want you to know that. You're away, but I got mine in too, so we have two of us. And I just wanted to correct something that I did last time during the announcement section that I really am, it's been bugging me ever since. And it's important to me and most of us up here and probably most people who are watching that we acknowledge the service people who return to our community. And I did read a proclamation that we all signed last time we met, and neglected to give it to the mom, the service person was unwilling to come. So I decided I would just do it all over again, since it was my mistake. So I hope you will forgive me, and when I'm finished, Teresa, if you would come up and receive the proclamation on behalf of your daughter. "The Town of Red Hook proclamation in Army, again proclamation in honor of Army Specialist Lisa Wiley. Whereas Red Hook resident Lisa Wiley did enlist in the United States Active Reserve in November of 2011, and whereas Lisa Wiley, following graduation from Red Hook Central School, and US Army Basic and Career Training, did volunteer for active duty in the war in Afghanistan. And whereas Lisa Wiley during service in Afghanistan was exposed to personal risk during shelling of the Army Base and while driving Army gunner trucks. And whereas Lisa Wiley, while serving for seven months and two tours of duty in Afghanistan, earned the promotion to Army Specialist. And whereas Lisa Wiley has returned to the Town of Red Hook and will remain for six years on active reserve duty, training monthly and for two weeks every summer. Whereas Lisa Wiley, a member of our community and the Town of Red Hook family, has earned the distinction of Veteran of Foreign Wars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Red Hook Town Board this day, and it was June 25th, 2014, to honor and commend Lisa Wiley for commitment to service to her country, courage in the face of danger, and through her actions as Army Specialist, has engendered pride and gratitude from her family, friends, and the entire community." And now would you come and get this and make sure she gets it? Thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much. For those of you who don't know, thank you so much, and congratulate Lisa. For those of you who don't know, the mom happens to be our highway superintendent. So we're all very proud of Lisa. And we're very proud of all of the returning service people, and I hope that they will, if seeing this, they will let us know that they've returned to the community. It's important to recognize them, I think. Okay, any public comment before we continue? Hearing none, we'll move right into the agenda. We have with us tonight Richard Rang from Kerchoff Properties, Inc. And Richard, welcome back again.
Thank you.
And you have brought two people with us to help us sort out some of our progress.
Giovanni Palavino is now a member of the Kerchoff team, is working with us, was formerly running, he's an architect and he's formerly running the Warwood Grove project. And Michael Watkins, planner, he was a planner for the Warwood Grove project, and he's a planner and architect, has been assisting us in refining the design of our traditional neighborhood. He's also the principal author of the Smart Code, which was used as the basis for the TND code. What I have on board right here is the previous plan that we had been processing approvals on. During the course of developing the plan, we came across Giovanni and welcomed his input on it and ultimately convinced him to come and be a member of our team, because he brought to us a lot of insight with respect to some of the things we were doing, and he brought his team from Warwood Grove, Union Studios, the architects that we were using, as well as Michael Watkins, to help us refine what we initially, what was a very good plan, and still believe it was a good plan, but I think it's grown leaps and bounds and it's much better now. In the original layout, and there's many similarities between the two, the project was spread throughout the community, we had some duplex units, some town home units that were centered here, a center green bringing you right through to some of the open space, another green in this location, which is the north end of the project with community Viable, workable, I think it lays out nicely, it's efficient, but it really wasn't capturing what we were hoping to be able to achieve with the traditional neighborhood until we brought Giovanni and Michael on board to refine it. I'm going to allow Michael to kind of take over now and kind of talk about the new plan and how we got to where it is now.
Would you leave that one up for just a minute?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Richard. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. The reason I asked to leave this up is because I think this does a fairly good job of meeting the technical requirements of the new traditional neighborhood development ordinance. When they asked me to take another look, it seemed like, well, first I should say that, I mean, my work takes me all over the country, and increasingly, I wind up working in places where there's already a zoning ordinance in place that allows the traditional form of growth to occur. You know, that hasn't always been the case, I've been at this for 25 or 30 years, and usually we come with a plan that we think's very much like the place in which we're building, only to find that, you know, half of it's illegal because they've inadvertently changed the zoning laws and so forth. So I'm delighted to have so much of the heavy lifting done before we get here, so thanks to you all for, you know, advancing that ordinance. So technically, I think this does a lot of the things the ordinance was calling for. It has clear civic space within the community, it mixes units, mixes residential types within the neighborhood, predominantly the larger front-loaded, single-family homes around the perimeter. This street's predominantly townhouses, this street, and this side of this street are the, say, medium-sized, single-family homes, there are duplexes along this street. But it did seem to me that when they asked me to take a look at this, that there might be opportunities to, I think, further show the potential of the ordinance that would allow this to occur, the traditional neighborhood ordinance. So we took a look at both the ordinance and the property and have proposed this plan.
No, I think that actually was...
Oh, thank you. That's why we have a team.
That's what we have here, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, yes, you may have an easier talk, following the one right in front of you. So you'll see that this plan still includes civic space, but in a different form and at a different location. And I think one of the most important changes was to move the civic space closer to the town, so that, and at the edge of the property, so it's not very deep into the neighborhood and can be enjoyed by everyone in town. Clearly, it presents one edge to the town, and almost at the closest point on the site. So both the location, as well as the shape and so forth of that, the primary civic space have changed. It may appear that there's less of the undeveloped land here, because if you compare the open space here with the prior plan, it's actually less internal, but that's because around the edge, we took a much more conservative approach around the perimeter and have pulled the lots in, so that this, the buffer area represents the rear lot line instead of, as in the prior plan, some of that buffer area occurred on the private lots. So that open spaces moved to places like this or along this edge, so the perimeter of the space has gotten larger. The internal, the primary internal open space has shifted to this location. And then there are a couple of other smaller civic spaces as well. The one in this area actually has homes fronting it that don't front the street, they just front the public space. It's not uncommon, if you study the traditional pattern of growth, to find places like that. They're generally small, as is the case here. So of the six houses that face the green, four are on corners, so they have a side lot line on the street. And really only two are limited to just the frontage on the public open space. But it's very easy for a guest to park on the street and walk into the green, in fact, I think it would be quite pleasant to walk into those houses on the interior of that green. This small green does, serves an important function in that it terminates the view down the street, which has the added advantage of creating what we like to call a vertical speed home. So instead of this awful kind, you have to drive over and then go get your shocks adjusted and so forth. This one you simply drive around, but it reduces the speed of traffic because it requires that turning movement, and it also makes an interesting view down the end of the street. So each street has a different view. Several of them terminate in the open space. So this edge, you may remember from the prior plan, was all built. So when we got to the edge here, we thought rather than privatize so much of that open space, if we left this side exposed, people from anywhere in the town could drive or ride a bike or walk over here and have access to the open space. The other plan had slots through, like this one or this one, that you could actually connect there, but this makes it a little more obvious and visible, and I think more of an amenity for the whole town. So that's another change with regard to the open space.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
This is a, is that a trail in the open space in the back there?
This is actually an existing farm lane.
That's the existing farm lane that Perimeter is doing at the property now.
Oh, it does? Haven't been back there.
Yeah.
I didn't quite understand your point that people from the town could access that green space around the perimeter. Is that what you said?
Yes.
And how would they, how would they access that? From whence?
Either driving or walking, there's a sidewalk connection here.
Okay.
And then obviously through the street network that comes down here. And then there's parking on the street.
Okay.
So it'd be easy to come back to this point in the neighborhood and then, say, take the dog for a walk or, you know, the kids or what have you, just for exercise.
Has your experience shown that people who live in this development are happy with that concept?
No. It may be counterintuitive to some, because you know, there is, there are folks that value privacy, you know, so the bigger the lot, the more green moat between them and their neighbors do. And that option certainly exists, that's out there. What we find is that these neighborhoods attract people who value community. So the idea of placing the front porch within conversation distance of the sidewalk, or sharing a path with the town at large is something that folks who have been here do welcome.
Okay.
They don't live in here by mistake, you know, the lots are clearly smaller, many of them are served by alleys, you know, so it is different from the more, let's say, conventional pattern.
Okay.
With regard to the ordinance, I was going to mention next the street section, you know, we're deliberately designing this to be pedestrian-friendly, you know, consistent with the ordinance. When you do that, the streets become primary civic space, not only for cars, not just the utilitarian function, but simply the pleasure of walking down a shaded sidewalk, where you do have houses close to the street and so forth. We like to see a variety of street types, some with parking, some without, two-way traffic, one-way traffic. Parking is a great way to calm traffic, makes it safer for pedestrians and so forth. And just, you know, this doesn't really affect this plan too much, because we've made a change here, but we originally had more diversity in the street types, because we had a street here that terminates in the clubhouse, that had sidewalks both sides, trees both sides, and parking both sides. Because I was, I tried to avoid parking lots, clearly just dedicated to parking, because obviously even when cars are gone, they look bad, you know, either way. And parking on the street, you tend not to notice whether it's used or not, you just expect cars to be there. So my view was that this street with parking both sides could serve as a parking lot for the clubhouse, you know. So I designed a wider street there, and then it was pointed out to me that actually the TND ordinance doesn't have that type as one of its options. So we've changed that, you know, at this point, so there would only be parking on one side, made that change. And in fact, you know, it took others on the team to point out to me that really everybody's within a block's walk from the clubhouse anyway, so maybe that's not such an important, you know, important idea. The final thing I think to point out in comparison is the distribution of the variety of housing types. So there's still a variety here, as with the prior plan, but I think unlike the prior plan, the mix is a little messier, if you will. It's, you know, the other plan, this is a street of this type, this is a street of this type, for the most part, still mixed within the neighborhood. But here you find, for example, a square that includes single-family detached homes of a variety of sizes and townhouses sharing the same square. This street, and this street, this street, all mix townhouses right in with the single family. And we've done that other places, and despite the concern that some of the marketing folks had in the early days, that people don't want to live next door to people who, you know, live in a townhouse or, you know, what have you. We've had absolutely no difficulty with that whatsoever, because we apply the same architectural standards, and the zoning ordinance applies, to treat the urbanism the same way, so the setbacks are the same and so forth. So they fit right in, you know, and in fact, we, from the earliest days, we did the apartments above the garage, which I think... which I think quite impressively and wisely, you all have included in your traditional neighborhood ordinance as well. And there's been no problem having the occasional rental apartment above the garage next to a townhouse, next to a single family. It works quite nicely when the same, when the other standards are all the same. So, the mix is a little, you know, a little more varied, I would say, than typologically a street.
Any other questions?
Yes.
That sounds like some of the things we saw at Warwick Grove, which is substantially more upscale than this will be. Is that, is that true?
It is true, yeah.
I don't know whether you, you must have seen, everybody's seen Warwick Grove, I think.
Well, actually, it was a master plan.
Oh, okay.
I did the master plan.
Oh, okay.
It's been a while, that was ninety-seven, we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's, I think it's...
It's very attractive.
Yeah, and in fact, you know, think about the, you know, the green when you enter.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's similar to this, right? Because the first thing you see is civic. And in fact, as we talked about phasing for this, you know, our hope is that this, this would be the first phase. So, that the impression that you get when you arrive here is not that they're just selling houses, but that you get the public realm as well. Like, that's something to get excited about, you know. So, we want to deliver that right up front, and so that's another similarity to Warwick Grove. I, that's, I think that's a good general summary perhaps. And I appreciate the questions because then I know I'm talking about things that interest you rather than things that I think might... Are there other questions?
Well, the green space would be owned by a homeowners association.
Right.
Now, I'm looking for a plan of one of these, one of these horseshoe-shaped buildings that looks like it's... The townhouses, yeah.
What you've got in the beginning of the book here is...
Is that it?
They're flex units.
Okay.
What these, these units were actually designed to, they can either serve as a single-family front-loaded, a single-family alley-loaded, or a townhouse. So, the same two-floor plans could fit into any of those configurations. This is that configuration. If you pull it back, you get the elevation of this as well.
You're in charge.
That's, oh, those are the elevations we're considering right now.
And this is, you don't have an elevation from the rear, but those'll just be garages, right?
Yeah, they're just garages.
Garages, okay. So, this is, this is what it looks like then.
Right, and we have this opening here, so that this private yard area is still accessible to the, to the alley.
Okay.
And then the end units, you see that they have a master bedroom on the first floor. We anticipate that a lot of the demand for this community is going to become from empty nesters. So, we have a lot of, a lot of units are designed with masters on the first floor, anywhere from a cottage home through the townhomes and the larger single-family homes we have over there.
This is a two-car garage in every area?
Not in every one. There's one-floor plan that's only showing a one-car garage. There are several-floor plans that are showing a detached garage. So, that garage may or may not get built on, in that particular situation.
Well, this one here is almost detached.
Oh, but those, in the townhouses, it's gonna be, it's gonna be detached. It is detached from, from the home you buy, but not necessarily from the home next to you.
Right, but this is a breezeway, right?
Yes. That's anticipated. I mean, that could be a covered breezeway, it could be enclosed at some point. It is, you know, there's, there's...
Now, this, this is a bedroom down, and then there's stairs, what...
To the upstairs bedrooms.
Yeah, now, the two bedrooms upstairs?
And you go back to the original floor plans, well, for any of the flex units, actually. You can see, because this is the same configuration as the end unit, and this is what can be done upstairs.
I see.
This is the same configuration as the interior unit in this configuration upstairs.
Okay.
It, it might be worth noting that although the floor plans are quite detailed, there's still a lot of refinement that's required, so don't, don't get impressed with delivering exactly...
There need to be some additional items, you know, additional floor plans that are added to the, to the project.
I'm not gonna be that close to that critical.
And just to be clear, I mean, this site plan is illustrated, okay? As we discussed in the past, and I've discussed it like with the planning board, the individual home buyer is gonna select which home they want and what lot they want. So, there are some, obviously, the townhome lots are gonna be townhomes. There are some lots that would only accommodate a smaller footprint for a cottage home. But in general, you'll have the ability to select multiple lots for multiple house options. So, that, this will be a little bit more organic in how it grows, because people will be selecting the lots that they want.
Personally, I think it gets much more interesting when, when you allow that to happen because, for example, right now, the same house is shown on all three of these corner lots. It's a great house on the corner because it wraps, it has a wraparound porch and so forth. But as soon as you get a buyer that comes in and says, you know, I'd really like this or that, here, to get a little more variety. Or these houses, for example, have exactly the same setback. But your ordinance allows flexibility, you know, reflective of... And somebody's gonna come in and say, I don't want my porch quite that close. I'd like to have a tree in the front yard, you know. So, it'll get a little looser and I think, I would say, messier, and frankly, more like your town as you allow that.
That's probably good.
Yeah, I think that will be good.
So, these houses will be built on order? You're not gonna build this out?
Well, they'll only want spec now, so I'll get the house they want. Now, with townhouses, we usually have to build a whole townhouse for anybody that wants one.
Now, what about the exterior? Is it hardy board shingles here?
Well, it's gonna conform. That was one of the items that, there are several things in the code that I think need to be refined because there's a lot of shals in the code that become a little bit restrictive in terms of what we can do and don't allow for alternatives. It's as simple in most cases of just changing a shal to a should in the code to allow us to be able to do a lot of the things that you might be able to do. These plans generally conform with what's required under the code. The hardy plank is certainly something we're looking at. Vinyl is not something we're looking at. We're going to be developing, to a certain extent, a pattern book that's gonna guide what we will and will not allow to be built in here. Right now, our plan is that we're gonna be the builder of all of these units and build them themselves. We'll have complete control over that. We don't know what the future holds, whether or not we sell some lots to another builder. We wanted to make sure that we had some controls in place that what was getting built was gonna still work with the rest of the community.
Along those same lines, you must know that last night, we shared the proposal with the planning board. And in the course of...
You were going to, but I haven't heard.
Yes, yes, we did. And in the course of that discussion, there were a number of things with regard to the ordinance that would apply here that we offered to share with them in the form of a list of some things that... They're really refinements, I think, that you might consider at the ordinance as this moves through the process. And that's actually a good example because the ordinance right now lists the materials that are acceptable, but without anticipating some future material that may be acceptable, you know, as we all try to find less expensive and more durable, less, more maintenance-free material options. So, somehow, you know, including that. So, we're gonna share with them a list of things that I'm sure, you know, we'll share with you as well, just for your consideration.
Ultimately, you would have to act on it, so...
I was about to say, you better share with us.
Well, the board's, the board's already recognized. There were a couple of items early in the process that, once we tried to implement the code and lay it out, that we realized were cumbersome in the way it was drafted. I mean, we had some coverage issues that, you know, there was some percentage of lot coverage and building coverage that, and we demonstrated that we, to do a townhouse lot, it would have to be four hundred and seventy-five feet deep in order to meet the lot coverage and building coverage issues. So, there were things that the town has already recognized. And I think they, they understand that, you know, in the course of implementing brand new code, we're coming across certain things that need to be addressed. There are a few other items that we'd like to bring to attention.
And to clarify something Richard said too, I appreciate, I think you said I was the principal author of the smart code. The way the smart code was actually written was as a group effort. Andre Stowani really led the effort. I worked for him for nineteen years. But it was, it was a group of us that were constantly feeding back our experiences from communities where we were working. And builders do a great, you know, sorry, but these guys do a great job of highlighting the loopholes in the ordinance you've just written, you know. Yeah, so, so we, we learned a lot about... I served as town architect for Kentlands through its twenty-two-hundred units, through its entire construction, and now serving as a town architect for nearly a three-thousand-unit neighborhood in Louisville, Kentucky. So, working repeatedly with builders and, you know, when it's your thing, you know, there's a listserv. Any of you wanna join? It's all about these loopholes and closing them and so forth. So, even details, you know, I don't know, I don't know the protocol here, but there are details like even how the alley is dimensioned and the garage placement relative to the alley. And one of the suggestions I'll make free to consider has to do with that, that dimension. And frankly, that wasn't a builder, that was a resident who called in the early days of Kentlands and said, I can't get my car in the garage. And, you know, inadvertently, we had listened to the utility companies that said, we need easements this way, and the problem won't make this adjustment to the alleys and so forth, without setting the garage another foot back, you know. And so, anyway, just from phone calls like that over the years, we, you know, learned a few things. So, we'll be sharing that in whatever the proper format or border is.
The road width, are they all the same?
Ah, that's a good, that's a good, that's one of the things on the list, in fact. Now, the ordinance is proposing twenty-four-foot wide...
Maximum parking one side of the street.
Exactly.
I think that's what we're proposing, we're proposing.
Yeah, I don't have experience with twenty-four-feet-wide, two-way travel parking on one side. My experience, we had originally proposed twenty-six in Kentlands. This was in nineteen eighty-eight. It's a three-hundred-and-fifty-acre neighborhood, as I said, twenty-two-hundred units. And the Public Works Engineer, you know, this was before you could go visit Warwick Grove. This is nineteen eighty-eight, okay? So, this was very early in this movement to build new traditional neighborhoods again. So, we were all learning. So, the Public Works Engineer said, we think twenty-six is too tight, but we will allow twenty-eight. So, we did a twenty-eight-foot section, face of curb to face of curb. They wouldn't let us do a yield-movement street, which is to say, twenty-eight feet, three lanes, parking on both sides with two-way traffic. So, you wonder how do you, how do you fit four lanes if you only build three? Well, in low-density places like this, you know, there's not high demand for on-street parking. So, you simply pull over and let a car pass, you know. It's the way we all behave when we have narrower streets. They, they wouldn't allow that yield type. So, we did parking on one side, two dedicated lanes for travel. And what happened is that there were, that parked car that kind of alternated from one... Has a great way of calming traffic. We didn't have that. So, the traffic, the perception was that the cars were speeding on those, we had ten-foot lanes at the time. When you put the porch closer to the street than people are accustomed to, and the kids are playing on the porch and doing chalk things on the sidewalk and all of that, and the cars are moving, even at, within the speed limit, it feels like they're speeding. So, residents call up City Hall and the car is speeding. They do the speed tests, and they know, in fact, they're not speeding, it just feels like they are. So, then the Public Works, so then they all wanted traffic calming, you know, humps, jiggles and all that. And we said, why not remove the no-parking-this-side-of-street signs and allow the cars to park, you know, on both sides of the street? To their credit, they did solve the problem overnight. So, what happened when the property, the three-hundred-and-forty-acre property next door to Kentlands sold eight years later, Public Works called up and said, bring those original standards that you all proposed for Kentlands because we're not gonna compromise this time. So, they let us do twenty-six feet, they let us do the yield movement. So, we have parking on both sides, two-way traffic, twenty-six feet. Twenty-four may be great, may be even better. Personally, I don't have experience with that, so I can't say for sure. But I can tell you that twenty-eight's too wide and twenty-six works just fine.
Now, is that with the cars parking alternately or lining both sides?
Well, in the areas, okay, so if you call that same guy, he will say, don't allow the yield-movement condition when you have predominantly multifamily or predominantly townhouse because it generates too much on-street parking demand. You know, we don't have that here. So, where you have single-family, predominantly single-family, the yield movement works just fine because, in fact...
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yield movement is alternate?
Yield movement's alternate.
So, that you're driving this way?
Yeah.
But it's not alternate by design. It's alternate, it's parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
But you rarely end up with people parked opposite each other. But if you do, then somebody just has to stop to allow somebody else to go through. Particularly in the low-density condition you have here, you wouldn't have too many cars parked opposite you.
Okay, so it, so it becomes instinctive with the, with the...
People don't think twice about it and aren't it. Now, a few of the streets where we do have more townhouses than singles, we've kept the parking dedicated to one size and, in one side, you know, so we have less parking on the street. But here, what we're proposing is exactly, is exactly as Richard.
Unfortunately, your draft highway, TND, street standards don't allow for parking on both sides of the street.
But there's, you know, we'll make an easy note.
One, maybe we could draft ahead of it.
Oh, maybe.
Maybe.
I can't remember, I just looked at it today.
Okay, in response to the submission we made for the planning board, Green Plan provided us a comment letter. I don't know if she shared that with the town board as well. But there are just a few items that she pointed out here that we will elaborate on in terms of the code-related issues. One key item is with respect to the size, the minimum size or maximum size of a cottage home. We've gone through great pains with our architects to try and develop something that was, you know, livable and marketable and affordable to build, that met that standard. And what we're finding is to do that, you have to stay on one level. And to stay on one level, the less-than-twelve-hundred-square-foot home, and you'll see that we have one plan in there, that's a one-level, twelve-hundred, eleven-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet. In actuality, costs more, would have to be sold for more than perhaps a two-story, fourteen-hundred-square-foot, fifteen-hundred-square-foot home, because the footprint is smaller on the two-story home. But I couldn't get a reasonable layout in the plan, making that footprint even smaller to have two stories with, you know, under, under twelve-hundred square feet. So, that's been an issue for us. I mean, we've mentioned it previously, having brought, you know, Mike Hill and Union Studio onboard, it's been accentuated to us. And, you know, Mike, maybe talk a little bit more about some of the difficulties we run into in trying to stay in that footprint. My, my biggest concern is the fact that it costs more to build that eleven-hundred-and-fifty-three-square-foot home that we've got in that plan set than a larger home. So, nobody's gonna buy it. People are gonna opt to buy the less-expensive, larger home than more-expensive, smaller home.
The twelve-hundred-square-foot threshold did surprise me. In fact, I even asked what, why that number in particular. And that generated a lot of discussion. In my experience, if you think about, think about designing a townhouse that might be a three-bedroom townhouse, so you've got living, dining, kitchen on the ground floor, and then upstairs, three bedrooms, and you're trying to keep that in the smallest package possible. Bedrooms need windows, can't put one in the middle of the townhouse. So, one of the walls, the end walls of that townhouse, needs to have two bedrooms side by side. The smallest bedroom we typically do is about nine by twelve. So, allowing for the thickness of the walls and so forth, you need about twenty feet of width for a townhouse. You can't go much deeper than forty feet for the depth of a townhouse, or it starts to get too dark in the middle. Twenty by forty is eight hundred square feet, times two floors is sixteen hundred square feet. And that's a more, a more common threshold, I think, as you're trying... And you can take that twenty-by-forty townhouse, detach it, you know, and build a very nice, single-family detached home. The other advantage of that twenty feet is that you can build a garage for two cars behind. You know, you could park two cars in twenty feet. If you add the width of the side yard, you can actually put the two cars in the garage and be able to open your doors. So, twenty-two or twenty-four feet for the garage works well. And then, it's nice to have that passage along the side of the garage too, so you can get out to the alley without going through the garage. So, that's a standard dimension that we find is widely acceptable to the market. There are certainly twelve-hundred-square-foot homes that work. I live in one, in fact, so I am that market. But I'm also the exception. I'm not twenty percent of the market as is required here. So, that's, that's one of the questions on the list. There's another drawing to share.
Yes, my fault.
Yeah, probably the best one.
Before you put that up, just to clear it to everyone, what we tried, what we wanted to do is render of, artist rendering of the view you'd get if you were walking up the sidewalk at the entrance to the community, looking out across the green.
One of the comments on the list is where this was taken from, so Richard's explained that already. So, that's from this corner, looking across, you see the townhouses on the far side of the green and single-family homes here. Personally, I think what raised the question, these guys know I'm gonna, I'm gonna poke at them a little bit here. I think what raised the question, where is this, is because it shows housing on four sides, right? This structure's actually a community building. So this could be that mail kiosk, it's the building at the end of the green that you see on your plan. In person, I think just that this light adjustment I might have made here would have been to use a higher, more classical architectural style, so it looked like a public building. The way in which we used to spend a little more on the library or, you know, whatever the city structure was, just to separate distance it from the, the single-family homes. But that's why this really isn't the house at the end of the green.
And those, those homes all face the green, right?
Yeah, there's, there's streets on four sides of the green. This building sits in.
But it's behind them.
Yeah.
And are all the streets on the, on the sides of the green are going both two-way?
No, very observant, actually, to pick up on that. There, one block is a one-way street with parking on one side. Yeah, we want to be able to circulate all the way around the green, but it just didn't seem necessary to have that street be two-way.
So that's the one on the right-hand side of the green?
The short one, exactly.
And, and none of these streets are dead ends?
No.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, we, we don't do the, we, for a network of streets, so.
So the, the little streets that you see off the sides of the plan, those are the alleys?
Correct, those are all alleys that have been controlled by the homeowners association.
Okay. So as far as the town road dedication, it's just?
I forgot.
Correct.
This network.
Yes, I forgot, okay.
Okay. And another question that we had was designated snow easements, places to put the snow in their plowing?
For the alley?
No, for the, for the, for the roads.
Well, the advantage, yeah, the advantage of having the on-street parking is that in the winter, most people are parking the car in the garage so they don't have to clean it every morning. And you've got that whole lane that certainly the end is where there's no parking allowed because you're.
Okay.
And there's going to be five plus foot tree island between the sidewalk and the, and the road.
Yeah, when I went down to Warwick Grove to look at their street arrangement, they explained to me that first they had to take it out with loaders and trucks, and then they were able to find green spaces in between that they could push the snow to. So one of the concerns we had if the town was going to take over this road eventually was, are we going to have enough room to put the snow? You know, so we asked for the wider tree lawn and, you know, I see there's no cul-de-sacs, which is great. But just to know that we have enough room throughout the street.
Right, well, and as you noticed that Michael pointed out earlier, was at the end of that northerly loop, there's no homes on that opposite side of the road, so that would be another location that could possibly, you know.
Yeah, at the end, you have a green.
As a matter of fact, we're not even proposing the, the sidewalk to cross that, that portion of the property there.
So here's.
Yeah, well, we'll have a community center at, where the dog of the road is here, so.
The issue with Warwick Grove too with the snow, you probably spoke to Lou Marquette, the issue there was the homeowners there didn't want snow in the street water. So because it's a municipal road, it hasn't been turned over yet, the HOA was taking out on the expense to now remove a hundred percent of the snow off the road, became too precious a little bit. And that's what caused that. Now, when, when the town takes it over, I don't know if they're going to do that. So it was a private request.
I mentioned that I lived in Kentlands, this neighborhood we designed forty-five years ago. And it, uh, it does require a little more creativity on the part of the, the plow operators. You know, and when you're working in such close proximity. But when they have the state snow plowing rodeo, they win every year. Because they're so good right now. So, and they do, they do a great job in the neighborhood too, so.
Do they get practice like the last winter we had here?
Yeah, yes, they do. Yeah, we have a few of those winters. We don't have that often, but you know, you have to plan for that because you have three or four years.
When the sidewalks are cleared, where does that snow go? Back onto the tree lawn?
Yes.
I mean, so you're, you're piling?
Well, in, in, in my neighborhood, they don't put the snow on the tree lawn. They do put it in the, in the parking bay. Because they're very, they're concerned too about the salt in the tree lawn. And so they try to keep it in the parking bay. And residents know that and use their garages. But the residents shovel the walks and they use the tree lawn. But, you know, they're not salted as they're.
A lot to absorb. But pictures help a lot. It's a, it's a very beautiful plan, I must say. What is your anticipation, having done this in a number of places? I'm sure that Kerchov has a phase in, in mind, having done a needs assessment of this area. What is your, what is your anticipated build in the first phase?
Well, what we're, you want to pull that, put that up, plan up? I think Mike touched on it a little bit earlier. We're anticipating first phase of the project, both from, you know, a needs basis, a physical construction basis, as well as our, our marketing intention, would be this portion of the property right here. Approximately twenty-eight units or so. We, as Mike, as Michael indicated before, we want this feature to be constructed in the beginning of the project. I, I think it's going to help us in terms of showing people what they're, what they're moving into as opposed to just buying a house on a lot in, in the town of Red Hook. They're moving into a community that's got some civic spaces. It also happens to be, you know, most of this topography here gravitates down into this area. So our drainage works fairly effectively, our sanitary sewer collection works very effectively. As you're aware, we're anticipating the sewer will collect in this area here. We're proposing for a subsurface, community subsurface disposal system. So this will be constructed all in that first phase, everything comes out of the application, so it'll work quite well. As far as water's concerned, we have the possibility of connecting, and I know this is still a matter of discussion, to the village system and/or the Roca Bee system. So that would poss, that would probably be within the first phase to make that, that connection as long as we can reach an agreement in terms of how that water's going to be brought in.
Can you show where the Roca Bee wells are on there?
The Roca Bee wells are located right here.
Right here, okay, that's, look, look there, disguised by trees.
Yes.
And the sewer treatment center is where?
We're proposing a subsurface disposal system in this area. And this area can accommodate both the, the system as well as the expansion area. And what we're actually proposing at the moment is we're ultimately building a hundred and fifty percent of the area that's required for the system so that we can operate, and it'll be in three, quote, three sections. So we can operate any two sections at any given time, giving the third section a period of time to rest. That's probably the single most important thing you can do to preserve the integrity of a, of a subsurface disposal system. Aside from the fact that we've got the most incredible soils for it in this location, it, it's going to make for a better system, reduces the amount of, you know, application rate we have on any, any section of it, and allow us the opportunity to take a section offline for a period of time and cycle that back in perhaps a year later, so.
Richard, did you say that you were planning to work with DCWOWA on the sewer system? Or is that still under discussion?
We have, we're, we're still discussing with them their, their requirements to just take the system over. There's, they, they adopted a set of standards that exceed the typical standards that we're talking to them about in terms of which portions we have to comply to and which we don't. When we did an initial analysis on it, the construction costs of, of the system meeting those standards to the letter, got ridiculous. So we're talking to Richard about which portions they, they absolutely have to have and which portions are, you know, a wish list. So if we can reach an agreement with her, then our intention is to construct the system and then allow them to, to own and operate it.
And likewise with the water?
Well, the water, Water and Ways Water Authority or the town, I haven't heard back in terms of whether the town wanted a district or.
The park field will matter, yeah.
It, it's certainly, it was the direction we wanted to go in in the first place, so that would be, that would be our intent.
This is the, the green, right?
This green.
Green here, which is, which is HOA-owned?
Yes.
Okay. And you, is, do you have, is that going to be like soccer space or any particular?
Informal, it's not going to be designated, it's going to be an informal green area for people to utilize, you know.
Baseball, baseball fields, picnics.
Well, yeah, but we're not going to strike the baseball field or anything like that. The area, the area, the area where the septic system is going to go is going to be leveled out and can be a multi-use field area.
Up to the HOA.
What if there's buildings there between the area that you just had your hand in?
The existing buildings. This is the Hovman Barn sale.
That's what I thought.
And this is his son's shop.
Okay, his son's shop, that was the one I didn't recognize, okay.
Movie theater here. And we're proposing right now, although we'll have to work with the town as well as some of the adjoiners to extend the sidewalk down to meet with the sidewalk on Route Nine.
Right.
So you are planning that?
Yeah, I think that's good for the, for the project, I think that's good for the community as a whole. I think it works to everybody's benefit if we can, if we can include that in the project.
On the one side, on the south side?
Yes, just on the one side.
And you, you have, you have sidewalk along Old Farm Road here.
Yes, yes, and we're anticipating on-street parking along our side of Old Farm Road as well.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Was there any talk about where that exits then on to Route Nine of doing a light or anything?
Uh, we had a, a traffic study done, as a matter of fact, I had it updated to the new plan because we changed the unit count and unit mix. But there's no warrants to require a traffic signal in that location right now.
And then also, how many of the one hundred and two units are incentive units?
Well, that calculation's going to be submitted soon. I believe we're somewhere in the neighborhood between sixty and seventy some odd as of right units because some of the properties in the commercial center district, some of it's in the residential center. So the balance of the hundred and two would be incentive zone units.
Sixty to seventy as of right?
Yeah. Yeah, my engineer is working up that calculation now, I just don't have the exact numbers, so. What's that?
No, I was just looking at John to see if he had any questions. He has much more intelligent questions than.
Oh, I actually saw the planning board presentation last night, so I'm sort of up to speed on this. I do have a couple of quick comments if it's okay. One is.
Do I invite his comments?
You don't have to.
So, so one is, I, looking back on all the work the task force did and this board did to create this Centers and Greenspace program, I'm really excited because there's been a lot of success in the green spaces part of this. When I had business, this was put together, we've had a lot of farm protection since then, a lot of voluntary cooperation amongst the farm and community with the, the new program, the new zoning and the purchase development rights. This is the other side of the equation, the centers part. And, you know, we kept preaching centers save green spaces. This is what we meant, that the housing that would have been spread all over that farmland is now concentrated next to the town business district and the village center. So that it creates this walkable neighborhood. And the real clincher is when you do the incentive units, the excess money goes into the purchase development program for the saving of additional farmland. So you really see how centers save green spaces. And it will show how the Centers and Greenspaces project that Red Hook is the model for has been a success when the centers part of it gets, started to be built out. So I'm really happy. I think the new plan is much improved over the old plan, which I thought was terrific as well. But this, I think, is a real refinement and, and is as good or better than Warwick Grove, I would have to say. And so it will be the new model for the region, for people who want to build village-like, um, development in and around existing centers. So that's, that's certainly my first comment. The second one was about the twelve hundred square feet limit. I think I was involved in coming up with those numbers, and any number is sort of an arbitrary number. You sort of pick a number out of a hat. But when we talked about it, when we were talking about it last night, I showed them a book that actually I wrote back in the nineties that everybody's forgotten about, but.
Twenty-nine ninety-nine, by the way.
Sign happens a little more.
But it was, it was a book talking about how you do affordable housing. And it had, based on traditional Dutchess County prototypes, historical prototypes. And so we had worked with Jay Johnson, who's a local architect who is really efficient at doing these sort of small-scale houses. And he did six prototype cottages, what you would call cottages, right? They were designed to be affordable. And when I looked at them, I hadn't had this book out for a while. When I looked at them, the chart here on page eighteen, only one of them is below twelve hundred square feet. In order for Jay Johnson to come up with even acceptable affordable housing, most of these houses are between thirteen and fifteen hundred square feet. So even very simple ones, that eliminate hallways and have fewer bedrooms and smaller rooms and combined dining and living spaces and all the rest of the things you do to save money in a house, the twelve hundred square feet seems like a, a limit that may be too low for an affordable cottage. So I would suggest that maybe we should look at that again and come up with a standard that actually creates the most affordable housing and still gives people a sort of small-scale living space that they think is necessary.
I just don't understand why it's less, more affordable, a larger, you know, larger square footage is more affordable, I don't get it.
Well, the only, the only one that's under twelve hundred square feet here, and it proves the lesson that Mike just talked about, is a one-story building. And it's L-shaped, it has a bigger foundation because all the rest of them are two-story. They have a smaller foundation, has a bigger roof. So all those sort of things that actually add across. Even though you have less usable square footage, you have more building space because you can't take advantage of the second story up and down. So you have a more efficient, and, you know, I'll leave this with you. If you want to take a look at it, you can just compare the, the larger two-story ones with the smaller one-story and see how affordability might actually be built into something that's between, you know, fourteen and sixteen hundred square feet rather than under twelve hundred square feet.
Interesting. Thank you.
There was some comment last night, I think, about the eight-foot depth of the porch?
Yes, yes. There, there was a couple of porches that were shown in this plan set that are just short of the eight-foot. But Mr. Watkins has been clear to tell us that we're not allowed to do that. Not because of your ordinance, but because we're not allowed to do that.
A porch must be eight feet or more.
To be habitable, would you ever build a room in your house that's six feet wide? You need at least eight because, you know, people will, people in these kinds of communities use the porch. So some should be ten. I didn't tell him that in front of you. Eight, eight, okay, great, okay, good, glad to hear that, okay.
And there was a discussion about the right-of-way and the porches and the steps. And one of the comments was that only the steps would be within the right-of-way.
We're not anticipating any portion other than, you know, maybe a walkway to the, to the steps within the right-of-way.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
The steps, the porch will all be within the property. I think what the discussion was is there's a setback requirement, both side yard, front yard, rear yard, that the porch, the steps, bay windows and such are allowed to encroach into under the ordinance, but not necessarily approaching into the right-of-way and stuff.
Yeah, that's a discussion that actually we need to understand a little bit because there's been some discussion about having those kinds of features inside the right-of-way. And the other issue is the fifty-foot right-of-way in a town versus a smaller right-of-way that might be allowed in a village. And I was wondering if you have experience with that and what you're expecting and what you're designing around in terms of the right-of-way.
Well, the right-of-way right now has been shown in all roads except for the one-way street at fifty feet. That's what the right-of-way is showing.
Okay.
So the, the width, the right-of-way width of the one-way street, you know, if, if, if the town requires that to be fifty feet, we're going to have to look at that and, and make an adjustment on it.
Well, it's just, it's the state law issue that we're struggling with a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, is that right?
And because villages have different flexibility because that's where, you know, we're allowed to have smaller right-of-way areas. And John, maybe we can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, villages can go down to forty, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But towns, for some reason, in New York State are required to have fifty-foot right-of-ways.
Right.
The TNSS, the fifty-foot right-of-way?
The, the which?
The, the traditional neighborhood street standards is fifty.
Well, I know, and that's what, that's what we've been talking about a little bit is whether there's any flexibility in that.
Sometimes it's just more than you need, it's just too much.
No, I understand that, it's not, so I don't think it's a question of what the town wants, I think it's a question of what we're dealing with.
You could, I mean, the fallback position is you could make that one-way alley.
This is the one-way alley, right?
As part of the private system.
Isn't this the one-way alley here?
It's a one-way road.
So they're going to have to hire somebody to come in and plow the alleys.
So the right-of-way can go into the one-way.
Yeah, I can make that right-of-way larger, it just would encroach onto the, the green space, that's all. And then you're, you're not going to see the line in the field, so.
No. Because we really, you, you wouldn't want that road to be any wider, the paid service, I mean.
Yeah, not necessarily.
This isn't the road, I mean, the road is a whole different issue, right? It's just the right-of-way, right? And the problem of private property, private improvements encroaching on the right-of-way is problematic, so, right?
Well, we can, we can certainly make. Well, we can, we can certainly make that right-of-way 50 feet wide, just so you don't have to address the issue at all. And as far as improvements, we're not proposing private improvements within the right-of-way. I mean, obviously, just like anybody else, lawn area, if your walkway goes to the sidewalk, it's going to encroach, but no, no building.
Trees and whatever, yeah. Okay, that's very doable.
And just because I'm an optimist, how long do you think it will be before the first house is sold there? How much do you, what's your experience been in working through a planning process to, from where we are today to actually getting a shovel in the ground? Is that too much of a question?
No, 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 I'm a-
I think the range could be very wide.
Yeah, how about?
You know, as a planner, I never understand why the process takes as long as it does.
As a planner, you don't understand?
I mean, I, I understand-
I get told every day it's because of people like you that takes as long as it does.
No, no, no.
That's what I hear. That's what my residents tell me.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, no, well, you should introduce us. Just one example, in November, we did a master plan for 1,400 acres in Ohio, 4,500 units. I think it's, I don't know this for sure, but it's got to be one of the largest planned communities in the state. I haven't heard yet because I'm here instead of in Ohio today, but we had a hearing at which I hope we received the vote on our entitlements. So in, what is that, nine months? We went from doing a master plan in a public setting to having all the entitlements that we needed for 4,500 units. So if you take nine divided into 450, this should take about 10 days. So I'm an optimist, too. Yeah, I don't know the local process well enough to venture a guess on that, maybe these guys.
Well, I could tell you at Warwick Grove, I was lucky enough to work on the first TND in the state. It took seven years to get the approvals.
That's unacceptable. It just can't, it's just too exhausting.
And I remember when we finally got the approval, Lou Marte, one of the principals, they weren't getting it. The village wasn't getting it. They weren't understanding it. He actually took it to the center of the village and says, "I'm creating this." The next day, we had the approval. So it just takes a while. It takes, you have to, you know, have to educate the DPW-
Up and down the line.
Fire department, the building inspector, there's a lot of variance that are needed. So it just takes time sometimes. And then in Warwick, they finally said, "Yes, you have the approval," and they age restricted us to 55. And that was one of the other issues with Warwick Grove that wasn't handled.
Fortunately, it's getting easier and easier, which is why you can do 4,500 units in that kind of timeframe because there are so many places to go to. Two hours down the road, Louisville, we showed them North Commons, just to see Warwick Road. There's always a place closer now than there used to be. So it is getting easier to do better.
I certainly recognize your concerns. I mean, to throw the other side of it, we did as-of-right 24-lot subdivision in Greenburg in Westchester County, 14 years.
It's just ridiculous.
You know, maybe we need one of those chess clocks where we got our presentation, we hit the big, and then it's up to you guys.
We had to locate every tree over six inches in diameter on a wooded site. It was only, you know, it was 40 acres. By the time we got close to the approval process, they made us go back and do it because the trees that were not six inches or greater when we first surveyed it had grown.
Well, it certainly makes sense to, to me anyway, that, you know, having had us gone through the process of creating the notion in everyone's mind and selling it, it has got to make it easier. I just can't imagine it isn't going to be paving the way for this.
I think now that we have a plan that we're more comfortable with, that I believe the planning board is comfortable with, engineering, the balance of the plan is going to be, you know, pretty straightforward. Obviously, we have to address the water, the sewer, you know, there's, just to point out with respect to stormwater management, we are proposing to implement several different stormwater management measures in here. We're thinking about doing some bio swales, we'll have some recharge areas.
And that isn't represented here as what you're looking at, right?
No, no, that isn't yet. But we're minimizing the traditional, you know, stormwater management basin that you see, you know, it's a problem. So we fortunately have the soils to allow us to do that.
Good, yeah, soils couldn't be better.
Richard, what happens if, for example, the first 25 purchasers all want townhomes? Or, I mean, how do you manage the diversity of unit type?
Well, the townhomes, I think, are going to be pretty much outlined in terms of where they're going to be because the lots have to be designed around the townhome itself. As far as what person wants a home on what lot, if more people want townhomes than we have available in that phase, then they go on a waiting list for the next phase to open. If, you know, not to suggest this might happen, but if we find that there's, you know, far more demand for the townhomes than the single-family homes, we may be coming back to the town for a minute in terms of our approvals. As I indicated before, we're going to be pursuing site plan approval for the entire project, subdivision approval on a phase-by-phase basis. The initial phase would be approximately, you know, 28 units. That's the phase we're going to market, that's the phase we're going to sell. We'll build some of the infrastructure for the balance of the project, of course, but, you know, if you wanted a home, if this was our first phase, but you wanted that lot, you're going to be waiting until the last phase of the project to be able to develop that lot.
So each, each phase would contain the three types?
Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to strive to try and meet the town's needs with respect to the way the zone is written, with respect to the percentage of units. I can't guarantee that we're going to actually get there, but we're going to make that effort to, to try and provide that, that mix. The market really demands the mix of units, not necessarily the ordinance, so we're going to try and accommodate whatever the market demands are.
We did it at Warwick Grove. In a TND world, we, the person that oversees the design, we call the town architect, even though they're not really part of the town. And what we did there is we designated certain lots that could only have a certain type of house. And usually that was either where there's a terminating vista or a prominent corner. For instance, a corner here, you don't want a small 1,100-square-foot house because it gets lost. So there's parts that will develop where that will have that restriction. This court here is actually a cottage court. These plans are designed specifically so that there's cottages looking. So there are some lots that are restricted a little bit, not all of them, but a few. And that's how you try to control it. The ones in between, we call background houses. Doesn't really matter. You know, you try to protect the vistas.
Another example is this one, which terminates the view down the street, and it will let the house terminate the view, not the driveway. So even if a buyer comes in and says, "Oh, we really like this, but we want to flip," you know, for whatever reason. We do what we call a regulating plan that kind of records the detail beyond what's required by the ordinance. So internally, we track those things that, you know, because it's protecting his investment, right? Have that be a beautiful terrace at the end of the street, and so.
On that subject, one of the things that we'll be, you know, listing in, you know, some of the things that we'd like to see adjusted in the ordinance, is the ordinance specifically precludes having a house at the terminus of the street. Says you can have open space, you can have civic space, you can have a civic building, but they don't want a residence there. It's been Johnny's experience at Warwick Grove that in some cases, those were the most desirable lots because people wanted to build their prominent home at the end of the street so everybody driving up that street is looking at their house. So they actually wanted, I personally, I thought it was probably a good idea to have it in there because I wouldn't want the headlights on my house, but there's some people that actually want that, that center of the mansion.
Are you doing that?
Interesting.
I have a letter in my file. We, in, I had a situation, you know, say, at the end of the street where I insisted that the purchaser center their house at the end of the street. There was some sunroom addition or something, they wanted it in the back and this, that, and the other. I said, "You're buying the house at the end of the street. Everyone has to look at it. It needs to behave, you know, relative to its place in the neighborhood, you know? Get the lot next door, whatever, you know?" So anyway, they, we insisted, they bought the house centered at the end of the street about three months after, even then I get this letter from the mail saying, "You were so right. Our house looks great at the end of the street. We're so happy, you know?" So that's, that's how it worked well for everybody.
So our projects, we actually relegated, uh, regularly house colors. So there isn't a clash. I mean, you can go that far. And I actually did a house all the time on a corner where I convinced this big lumberjack that his house needed to be mowed. But it needed to be mowed because of, you know, the color palette of that intersection. And I got a letter from him saying, "You were right."
That's great.
You have to see it in the whole context of the entire neighborhood.
You are going to control the colors then.
We're going to, and as we're developing the project, as Michael pointed out, it's our investment. We want to make sure that we don't end up with two houses with the same elevation, same color, you know, next to each other unless, unless that actually becomes part of the feature. Like, these lots here, these two lots here are going to be premium lots because their front door is looking out over the open space. We might actually want those to be sister homes. We might want them to be the same home opposite each other, you know, 90 degrees, you know, opposite each other because that'll, that'll create that, that location there. I think you actually had a situation like that.
Yeah, and we're, in one of our pocket parks, they were the twins. We called them the twin sisters. I mean, same color, same detail, same shutter, same light fixture. There was no difference between the two. Everybody in the neighborhood knew that.
That would get me lost on the way home.
Again, you know, Mike talked about this prior, but it sets up the green, so it defined an edge, so that you knew that was the edge of the open space. So it's kind of become, you always call it the outside room.
We have to, this mania that every house has to be different, we have to plead often to get two or three houses next to each other built to be identical, which was often the case, you know? The parents built three houses for the kids. So you find that even in much older communities. And, and, you know, in a strange twist, the similarity actually adds to the variety, right? If every house is different from every other house, that's one sort of variety. But as soon as you introduce three that are different or that are the same, they're different from all the others, you know? So it's, it's hard to get that. And then, you know, in North Commons and one in Kentucky, I mentioned, we have, we have a whole square where we require the same color all around the square. It's completely different from anywhere else in the neighborhood. And they're small houses, but they have a big presence because they share that identity. And then one neighbor wanted to repaint their house, you know? And we left the decision to them, but we said, "This is why we did that, because your houses collectively appear more grand on the square because they have the same color scheme." And the neighbors talked about it, came back and said, "We agree." So we got to keep that at least for now. Never know what's going to happen in a few years, but.
So some of these, I thought I heard you say are going to be built by other than you all.
No, I, I said, "In the event that someone else was building," well, our intention is to build the project out, but if we were to sell some of the lots to another builder, we want to make sure that we still control the architecture.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go quickly back to the question of the snow removal? And my understanding from your comment was that they don't remove the snow from the streets, they put it in the parking bays?
Depends on the, the amount of snow we have. We'll have a really heavy snow every three or four years. Most years, it's just in the ends of the parking bay, or frankly, where the neighbors haven't parked, you know? Sometimes the cars get plowed in.
I don't get that.
So, well, no, because you have, you don't get that they do it or whatever.
I, I don't get how that works. I, I, you know, I live on a street in the Village End, and, I mean, there's parking on my street, and the state comes through, and if the state were to leave a dump of snow in front of my house, you can bet my husband would be on the phone. So I don't get what it is that you're saying that you're going to do with all this snow. I mean, we just came off a winter, we don't want to repeat, but it will be repeated, I guarantee it.
Right, and when we have those heavy snows, they do wind up hauling snow off in that, in that case. But on the lighter snows, I, maybe it's because we're in, in, so close to DC, you know, right outside of DC, that, that's what they've always done.
I would, I would anticipate that, you know, Laura and Carmen park in the street when they're plowing.
Well, she's, you know, our superintendent of highways is concerned if we-
What typically happens is the snow gets into the tree lawn and it may spill over onto the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk gets cleared into the tree lawn. We wouldn't leave the snow in the street because the parking that's supposed to be on the street is informal, correct?
Right.
So there are no designated parking areas where you could just push the snow in. You're talking about going down the street and clearing the street. So you're going, the snow is going to go off to the sides, which will be the, the tree lawn.
Well, to the curb, yes, yeah. So some, some of it gets in the tree lawn, that's right.
Well, the tree, the tree lawn's five feet, isn't it, between the curb and the sidewalk?
Minimum, five feet.
Yeah, and then the sidewalk's five feet.
Sidewalks-
I think the tree lawn was six foot in the proposal, the sidewalk was five.
Right, in the new street ordinance, which contradicts what's in the TND code right now, so.
That's one of the things on the list, too.
It would be no different than any of the streets in a village short of the main drag, Sue. During the heavy snow, the streets are a lot narrower for most of the winter, and that's just a given. You don't park on the street in the winter. In fact, the-
Well, they don't have sidewalks on most of the streets in the village, though, on the side streets, you know? The plow goes through and it shoves it on somebody's lawn until it's gone.
Major highways, we're talking about a residential neighborhood here, it's too-
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, the difference is that this is, this is, this is assuming that it's going to be town plowed. It has a sidewalk that the person owning the property has to clear, and our responsibility is to put that snow somewhere, not on the sidewalk where the person just plowed or just shuttled. And that's a problem.
Right, but it's the same way in the village. What it is, is there's, there's less parking in the winter, there's no question about it. And most of the streets in the village are narrower than these are even proposed, most of residential streets.
You don't find it a problem? You don't find it a problem?
We've been out most of the winter out in some big storms.
James Ross, you don't find it a problem if you clear the snow in front of your house, work all morning, go off to work, and the plows come through and put that snow right back on your sidewalks? That's not a problem for you?
It happens all the time. I'm saying is a lot of the snow remains in the street in the neighborhood, Sue, all winter. Because there isn't, there isn't, a lot of the side streets in the residential section of the village don't have a place to put the snow. And every village street is narrow in the winter. And you do more yield and weaving than you do when cars are parked on both sides.
It's amazing to me how people adapt. I have lived in the city in owning a brownstone, and I had to keep that sidewalk clear. By law, I was going to get fined, maybe go to jail. And I always managed, and, but I shovel snow eight foot high and need to do it.
We, we have enough room that the street, the snow from the street doesn't end up on the sidewalk between the-
Yeah, if it's a six-foot tree lawn, that's-
With that, you've got lots of them.
Even five foot, that's pretty good.
And anything that remains in the street serves to slow the traffic down in the winter.
No, I was just hearing earlier that the snow remained in the parking bays, but there are no parking bays, so.
It's informal, just like the residential section in the, in the village of Reno.
You're going to clear the 24 feet and it's going to go onto the tree lawns in the way that we practice snow plowing.
My streets, easily five or six people are there most of the winter.
We're coming in like Warwick Grove does now with front loaders and dump trucks.
No, they don't because there isn't a place to put it, you know? Particularly where a lot of the horses are very close. The streets are narrow all the way along, not a problem.
Now, the alleys are going to be much more restricted for slows, snow removals, right?
So is that what they do? They are responsible for the alley clearing, the HOA?
That'll be the tough part.
Good. Good lively discussion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I really do appreciate it, and you're welcome.
A pleasure. Thanks for coming. Thanks for spending the time with us. Four months. Four months.
Do you want your watercolor emailed to you?
No, I want it presented. Frame it in the office. No, I just remarked about this watercolor when you brought the project in. I love watercolors. My wife likes it too.
We should ask Roger.
What are you going to do with your barn there, Roger, when this big old project goes up?
Have you reserved a house for yourself?
We're going to have more customers.
Walkability. Plus the movie theater, are they going to make 12 theaters in there?
You can walk to the theater, you can walk to Roger's. You have to do a setup. They can walk to Holy Cow.
Yeah, if I could get that back to you the next time we meet, I would love it. Okay. Oh, you do? Thank you. Thank you, that's great, I'd love to have it, thank you. Thank you for coming.
John, thanks, it's good seeing you again.
Yes, thank you.
I think we're going to see you in some weeks, right? Somebody said you've been assigned to some project up here.
Yeah. He's not coming. You'll be back. Thank you. Thank you, have a good evening.
Bye, ma'am.
Okay, very interesting. I'm, I am looking to, and I don't know the answer to this, do any of you remember? I don't have the re-arc with me. Have we assigned two people to negotiate fire contracts?
No, I don't believe.
I don't think so, I wasn't here for that.
Okay, I don't recall doing that. Do we have anyone who's burning, has a burning desire to do it?
Well, Jim and Bill.
Jim and Bill did well last year.
I think I nominate them.
I think we're better off, we keep using the same people, really.
I'm very convinced that Brendan and Harry are better off.
They know the game.
Are you two willing to renegotiate this year? You and, you and, I'll ask you to speak for yourself and then Bill to speak for himself.
Yeah, no problem. We're doing it again, yeah.
Okay, all right, so I appoint Bill O'Meara and Jim Ross to negotiate the fire contracts. And I have been asked by the village, one of the villages already, about that, so I will let them know that you're willing and we'll set something up for a first meeting, I guess. Okay, thank you. Does anyone, speaking of appointments, does anyone have, did we appoint a new planning board member?
No, we were waiting for the chair and the member to get together one-on-one.
Okay. I thought that had happened, but Jim, you don't recall whether they have actually come back? I haven't received anything from the plan.
The last time we were, I think we were waiting for that to come back, and we wanted you to be here too, Brendan, I don't think.
Okay, so we're waiting for the planning board to come to us with the recommendation.
And I didn't, did you see anything from them?
No, I haven't. And the one who applied has, I know she's attended meetings and spoken to the board in general, but Chris always likes to speak with the people one-on-one.
Okay, so we'll poll again, Chris Kane, and find out whether they've made a decision. Okay, thank you. All right, so I don't have anything other than this question of are we prepared to pass a resolution regarding the, the, where is it?
The bank?
The bank thing, yes, the bank thing.
Investment policy.
Investment policy, thank you. Sue has everything we have. Is anyone, any objection to passing that tonight?
No.
I have not either, so here is the resolution.
That was yours, actually, with your name on it.
Okay.
Here's Harry and Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there was, there was one thing at the end where Deb had talked about taking a couple of things out. Did you guys take that out or leave it in?
I did not want to take it out.
Chris, this one is for you.
I didn't see any harm in leaving it in.
From Linda? She's got your name on it, so. I think I have one. I think she checked, corrected the date on it or something.
I think this is as it was, the original. I don't think those sections have been deleted. So if you have reviewed it, I have reviewed it, and we're comfortable. Shall we move on to the resolution? Okay. So as of July 8th, 2014, whereas a proposed Town of Red Hook investment policy has been submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook by the supervisor, and such proposed investment policy is on file with the town clerk, now therefore be resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook by at least a majority, that in accordance with Section 11 and 39 of General Municipal Law, the investment policy for the Town of Red Hook is hereby approved in the form on file with the town clerk. And I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Deb will be very happy about that. Deb is trying to tie up all the little bits and pieces, and she really wants to have everything tidy before she, she's doing a great job. She is doing an amazing job. Okay, so I think then we can move on to the department, board, and committee reports. And I'll start, if you don't mind, with the assessor's office. Tuesday, July 8th, assessor's status report to the Town Board. Since the last Town of Red Hook board meeting, the assessor's office has been involved in the following: publishing the 2014 final assessment roll on July 1st in accordance with state real property tax law. Recorded changes to the tentative roll as directed by the Board of Assessment Review and corrections for real property tax law. Three, he has attended Cornell Cooperative Extension Two-Day Seminar on Agricultural Issues Facing Assessors held in Voorisville on the 24th and 5th of June. Number four, he committed to attending the New York State Association of Assessors 2014 Cornell Seminar on Appraising held in Ithaca, July 13th through 19th. And number five, has begun identifying properties which require review before next year's assessment roll. And as always, my staff and I remain committed to continued fair and equitable assessment practices and look forward to continued service to this community. Respectfully, Scott Hobson, assessor. And Brenda, I have your name on the community dog park report from Paul.
From Paul Piastro, the co-chair of the Dog Park Committee dated June 25th, 2014. It's quite a long letter, but they work so hard and do such a nice job. I think you should read that whole thing. The Rhinebeck Red Hook Dog Park has been a success since its opening in October of 2013. Residents of Rhinebeck and Red Hook, as well as some contiguous townships, have been bringing their dogs to the park located on Stone Church Road in the Town of Red Hook, and all have remarked on the value of the park and the size of the facility. The dog park has seen moderate use due to its location and limited advertising. However, all can attest to the value that a dog park for socialization and interaction with other canines. The dog park is separated into two sections, a large dog and a small dog area separated by a stockade fence, which prevents visual contact between the two areas. Both areas are mostly open grassy areas with some shrubs and trees in the large dog area. At this time, there are no permanent toys for the dogs to use, however, this will be a future provision once funds are realized. Both areas have a double gate system which allows the dog owner to unleash their dog within the confines of the first gate. This also prevents dogs from escaping should they breach the inner gate. Rules and regulations are posted near the entry gates with phone numbers and registration information. Residents of both towns must register their dog at the Rhinebeck Town Clerk's Office and pay a $20 fee for use of the park. The Rhinebeck Animal Hospital supplies refuse bags free of charge to patrons to clean up after their dog. This trash is removed weekly by the Town of Rhinebeck. The dog park is monitored by stewards who periodically check the grounds for needed repairs, clean unwanted messes left by careless dog owners, rake and seed as needed during the year, and monitor use of the park. They do not perform a law enforcement function, however, may inform users of the registration requirement as needed. Town of Rhinebeck officials mow the dog park as needed. Future work that is planned is an upgrading of the signs to include large donor information and a kiosk to distribute registration forms with a bulletin board for owners to make playdates for their dogs. Continued seating is needed to establish a healthy lawn inside and outside the perimeter of the fence. Several upgrades to the latch zone gates are needed in the near future, and topsoil is needed to complete the landscaping along the fence and in the entry areas. As previously mentioned, permanent dog toys are planned for installation and small shelters need to be built for people to sit for shade while their dog is enjoying the facility. Registrations alone have not been able to bring any significant money to enable these repairs. Fundraising will need to be done this year to garner enough funds to do the landscaping and signage. More advertising of the park is also vital to bring more dog owners to the site with their pooches. Finally, support from the towns of Rhinebeck and Red Hook will keep the interest of the volunteers active and will also provide needed financial support. Towns throughout the county and state are building dog parks as they see it as a positive public service to their residents and their dogs. Volunteers are encouraged to become a steward and assist with the fundraising, maintenance, and oversight of the dog park.
And that from the co-chair, Paul Piastro, it was a great report. Makes me want to go get a dog. It does.
You volunteer.
I would, I surely would. Okay, Jim, could you do the building department report, please?
Okay, I have that here. There were 10 permits issued. There were 17 inspections, you know, inspection reports. We had 13 certificates were issued, did not include CCs and COs. And there was a total amount of fees collected, $1,910 plus $400 in fees for searches, a total of $2,300.
Thank you, and that's from the period of 6/23 to 7/08, so it's really only two weeks, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you, Jim. Okay, and Bill, would you do the sheriff's office, please?
They had 88 total incidents reported by the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, that would be for June 2014. And they gave us a breakdown of the different types of incidents, but that was the total number for the month of June, 88.
88 in the Town of Red Hook?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you have anything to report, Harry?
No, everything, there hasn't been meetings, the EDC meets tomorrow, and the last time I reported was the date of the last EDC meeting.
Can you report on what's going on at the Red Park? Because this is the exciting time of year for them.
The Red Park is, let's put it that way, the kids program, young kids program is new, reorganized, and doing very well. I have been over there, and as a grandpa, it's fun to watch the kids running around.
Right.
And we're having, it seems to be, to me, that there is always, not just one game, but games everywhere. So it's, it's a park that's well utilized.
Good. That's good news. Okay. Any other committees or boards that deserve a report that?
No, not since our last report a couple of weeks ago.
Right, it was only two weeks, so it's a little bit of a short time. And again, just to remind you that our fourth Wednesday of the month, we will be meeting for the purpose of having a public, a public comment period on the shared services of highway garage or highway departments with the villages of Tivoli and Red Hook, and that will be at the Village Hall on the fourth Wednesday, which is, get the date of that.
23rd.
And it's open to the public, and they're encouraged to come at 7:30 on the 23rd of July. Otherwise, we won't be seeing one another again. So there's, is there any public comment before we finish? I don't think we, any correspondence that has come in, you have to review in an envelope, I think, and none of it is made for discussion, I don't think. So I will suggest that we go into attorney-client for the purpose of discussing contracts and come back out to close the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. It is quarter after nine, and I suppose it won't take us long to do what we're going to do.